Everybody ready?
Yeah.
I'd like to call the January 7th Committee of the Hole Meeting to order, please. Roll call.
Daniel.
Here.
Larry.
Here.
Tim.
Here.
Misty.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Amber.
Here.
All right, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, now, we need approval of the agenda. And I believe that Mr. Latham, is that in our packet and in the... I believe it made it, did it not? The one that you were referring to Friday?
Yes, I think I sent it to everybody. It's actually a resolution. We didn't get that from the bond attorney until late on Friday afternoon. What it's basically is to be able to utilize, to reimburse yourself from the bond fund 60 days prior to when it closes. And it's important, as you know, we've got a water tower that we'd like to get started on. James needs to go ahead and get some easements on the water line. We've already got some engineering work that'll be done on Fletcher, so that'll need to be reimbursed. So what it does is it gives you an opportunity to be reimbursed 60 days. So I would like to see that on the agenda if possible. Thank you.
All right, seeking approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve with the addition of the bond issue for us to discuss.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Mike.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Amber.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Misty.
Yes.
Next, I seek approval of the December 5th, 2024 Committee of the Hole Meeting. Minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Mike.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Amber. Uh, yes. Daniel.
Yes.
Misty.
Yes.
Next, we have comments from citizens. They, you can come up and discuss the weather, anything you like, other than anything that's on our agenda tonight.
Good evening. Kenneth Love at 18702 Clearwater Road. The weather is cold and uncomfortable. All right, so I have a question. Tonnitown is the host city for Eco Vista Waste Management. What exactly is the city's strategy to deal with the vapors from Eco Vista Waste Management? ADQ keeps saying it's not a theme. It's been since April since they've done anything. I can't do this by myself. I need some support. And since y'all are the host city, y'all should have some power to talk to somebody somewhere, and I would appreciate if that happened. We got a new subdivision that's coming in at the end of Arbor Acres Road and on Harmon Road. That is the Tonnitown Future Planning Area. I don't know if Washington County has talked to y'all about that, but it seems like there should be something that's discussed between the city and the county. And emergency services, I've called emergency services, they ignore me. I've called ADQ, they ignore me. This is beyond what I ever thought I would have to imagine. So I need y'all's help. Where do we go from here? What is the city of Tonnitown's? What do our future hold? Thank you.
1851 South Panalto Road. I want to thank each and every one of you for your service. I do think you do a good job. However, to follow up, Kenneth, this waste management thing is getting scarier and scarier. We talk, and everything leads back to ADQ, but we do nothing. If there's anything, anybody, or anyone you see or hear that can help us, we would appreciate that. It is, it's making us sick. We don't realize, and we'll be dead and gone by the time they've caught up to them. And it's, it's very scary. If somebody could just get us some answers. And I'm going to be the squeaky wheel. I got to at least once a year. I thank you for all the work Mark and the engineers are doing. And so far, we've been dry. I just want to remind you, I'm the bottom of the hill. Thank you.
Absolutely. Happy New Year. My name's Chris Trout, 1278 Kelly Avenue. I met with Mark and Zach earlier this week, right? Last week, okay, can't keep me down straight. So I wanted to thank them for taking the time to meet with me because where I live, and obviously, you know, as close as she is to the, to the bridge and to the creek and what they're exploring, and the options that will be presented within a week or two or so, I think will, will benefit me and some of my neighbors. Hopefully, it won't affect her in a negative way. But anyway, I just wanted to say thank you. So that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, Mr. Williams? All right. Moving on. Oh, oh, yes. Is anybody online? Thank you. Old business, we have none. New business, a discussion of an ordinance of the City Council to establish a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Mr. Latham.
Believe I mentioned this to the council maybe last month or the month before about creating a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. The community is large enough now to support the needs to establish this board. As I mentioned even this morning, you know, we're getting close to almost 8,000 people. It's interesting going back to my earlier days back in 1977 when I was hired by Silum Springs as Parks and Rec. They had an advisory board, and at that time, they had less than 8,000 people. And the advisory board was really good because they really took the role of trying to plan, look at different aspects, including recreation, and bringing those recommendations to the council or the board at that time. And we've got a lot going on. We need to do a lot more planning, as you know. We truly not only need to resurrect a little bit of the, the current park that we have, and we have a plan in place, but we absolutely need to be looking at some future property for a larger scale park that would include some sports areas for the team, soccer's, different thing like that. So I'm encouraging you to look at this, put this on for council approval. The primary purpose is to make recommendations to the council on a variety of activities that include current park renovation, recreation, open space master plan, pedestrian and bicycle plan, even culture arts, which is something that, believe it or not, back years ago in Silum Springs, we created a culture arts center, which is actually held in the old Methodist church, and have theater there. And then specialty events, community center, which we're hoping to get off the, the, maybe moving in this by the end of this year after we get everything done. And then just long-term planning and recommending that to you all. So unless anybody has any questions about it, it's a seven-member board. It's, you don't pay for anybody. It's a volunteer. So any questions or anything?
Yeah, what about, like Halloween in the Park, Bochy Ball Tournament, will they be taking those over or everything?
Well, I think we probably need to incorporate it a little bit. As you know, some of you are volunteering for everything. I'm looking at YouTube. I don't think Halloween in the Park is probably something that's being held pretty close to Rhonda, so I wouldn't think that that would be. But, you know, there might be some other things that could be used, and it could have been incorporated. It's basically trying to bring more people together. As I stated, you know, you've, I, I get people come in my office and really want to volunteer. I know I talked to Chris Trout about doing some volunteer work too. And so, you know, people will come in, they have an interest in it, it's more different ideas type thing. So I don't think they're going to take it fully over, but I think enhance and help support it, I guess you would say. They might have something else that they want to bring to the table, too.
Like we did with the foundation, the community.
They'll work with the foundation.
Yeah, we'll just create it kind of like we did to find the volunteers and stuff.
Yes. Mike, did you have some?
Yes, and that was a good question. I, I didn't see that aspect of it when I was reading through this. But as far as them taking over some activities, that may be an interest that they really have in doing it. But I did have a few questions about some of the aspects of it. Like, are council members permitted to be on the board, council members or spouses?
I think they would be an advisory, but not an actual.
Well, that's what this is, is.
It's an advisory, but I'm saying is, you know, hopefully, we have seven members, right, from the public, and then the general public. And then if, if the council member, if the mayor wants to appoint one of the council members or two to actually serve on it as, I guess you would say, ad hoc, that would be fine. I, I plan to be at every one of these meetings since I'm kind of overseeing the parks right now, so.
Well, do we have people in mind already? Are we going to seek out letters of intent, kind of like we do with the planning commission? That's, that's the goal? Okay. Yes. The, I think I see one potential person that would, you know, think, reach out to.
I mean, you know, he wants, he didn't have anything else to do but work out.
Exactly, yeah. So I have one suggestion for a person who might be on.
Okay.
Mike, can I answer your question? Is it okay if I answer your first question?
Absolutely.
I think it's, I think it's absolutely imperative that we have someone that's on council on there, my opinion. Because back when we first had the park, council's the one that did it all. And I think that it would be a great benefit to have someone or a spouse from council on the board.
Thank you.
My opinion.
And I see that there are two-year terms. Are, is it only a two-year term? Are they able to, I mean, it is volunteer, so.
It's volunteer, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so at the end of the two years, we're not looking to replace all seven members. We're going to say, okay.
No, I think they could probably re-up, and that could be established that if you wanted to say that you're only concerned for two-year terms, I mean, that's a possibility if you want to include it in that, or if you want it just to be kind of loose, that's fine, too.
I, I, I'm fine with the way it is. I just, you know, want to make sure, you know, that people don't, as soon as their two-year terms up, and all seven of them don't just disperse into the wind. One other, I assume, is there going to be a community development director, or is that going to be the mayor? I said, I see that it's community development director or mayor. You're the community development, okay, that answers that question. And other things, just really a comment. I think it's really imperative to have this, especially with the onset or upcoming heritage district. I think those two would, it, it would be a must to have that in place, obviously, before they break any ground there.
That's correct.
Uh, I think this is a really good idea, so I don't see any issues with it. Thank you.
I don't know, you know, if this is created, I would think the seven, the seven members, we would, kind of like what we discussed here in council, is, you know, having some at a two-year, you know, an interval them out, so they don't all come off at once. And then, I don't know if we would make one of those the chairman.
Yeah, that would be voted on.
I don't know if that needs to be spelled out in here, or if it gets spelled out somewhere.
They might be able to fill in, they might do their own bylaws if they want to.
Gotcha. That'll be where it'll all be created. Gotcha. With that, I'd, I'd motion to move this to council.
I believe there's a statement or two more.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I just wanted to add on to what Mark had said. One thing that, one reason that we lost one of the grants was because we did not have a park board. So I think that in order for us to move forward and get grants for the park, we do need, we do need a board.
Maybe we should seek some more of the grant writing experience to be on that board.
And I believe, Tim?
Uh, yeah, just a, just a slight comment. It, it's my understanding, and it, and it was when I was first appointed for, in Escouche years ago, that this, the committee of the hole is just that. And that there are other committees that exist in town that have members of council on them. So I think it would make sense to have a council member on it, even if they rotate out or what have you. And then as we get other committees that we do that. So I am not volunteering unless you, I finish that sentence by saying, I am volunteering Misty or Amber. And then I am. If they, if they'd like.
Okay, so I believe, Daniel?
I make a motion, we move this council.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Daniel.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Tim.
Absolutely, yes.
Misty.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Amber.
Yes.
All right, next, we have a discussion of bids for the water tank bond project. Mr. Clark.
Good evening. Actually brought this, brought this up last Cal meeting. Didn't make it on the agenda, but we do need to kind of get this ball rolling. As Mark mentioned earlier, we've got some things that we need to pay for, easement specifically for the water line, and need to get those going. But anyway, you've got the, the recommendation from our engineer to go with the low bid. They, they have worked with Landmark Tank, and as we have on our first tank, and very, very well acquainted with those people. So it is over the, the bond amount by $919,000. And we don't know exactly yet where we're, how we're going to fund that, but we have to do it. Kevin Fought spoke with him a little bit last week. He had an idea or two about how to, how to go about doing that. We do still have ANRC we can fall back on. Uh, we also have some money in the bank and impact fees. So if we had to, if it came down to that, we could, we could make that work. It was to plead our reserve, but we, we've got to get it done. And I've got more bad news that I'll tell you about at the, at the council meeting in my monthly report. Not bad news, but just more things to spend money on.
Ungood news.
Ungood.
Yeah.
I like that word. Any questions about the tank project or?
I, I do have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Comparatively, like, from this tank that we have, is it going to be bigger, about the same size, smaller?
It's twice as big as this tank. Yeah, this is a 500,000 gallon. This will be a million gallon.
What did we spend on that tank, which was back?
About $2 million. About two million.
Couple of questions if I might.
Sure.
So anybody who's paid any attention to this, and I would suspect that the people that are bidding on the project did, knew that we had $5 million to spend. And interestingly, the lowest bid was $900,000 over. So does that mean that there's just no stinking way they can do it for five million? I, I, or?
Pretty much. I mean, you would think that i- if they all knew that it was five million, they would try to get a little closer to it. As you see, one of them was almost seven million.
I did see that, yeah.
So they probably had an engineer's estimate that they were going by, but they still bitted it, you know, what it costs to build it.
So that's question one. Here's question two. Can we make that, say, an 800,000 gallon tank or a $900,000 gallon tank to reduce the cost of that bid?
Um, if anything, I would like to make it bigger. The million gallons, like I've mentioned before, it's going to get us probably five to seven years down the road. And we're, we'll be looking at another tank. If we could increase this one to a million and a half, that might buy us, you know, another three to four years before we have to add. But we've got plans in, in the master plan to add another tank out west anyway.
Well, I, I absolutely get that, but when we're nearly a million dollars over, I mean, that's almost 20% higher than what was allotted by the citizens to spend on that. So I'm not super excited about it.
I'm not either.
But I, I do understand we need it. I understand our infrastructure is problematic. Uh, it's one of the concerns that, that weighs really heavy on me almost all the time. So thank you. Appreciate that.
Yes. I just have one, you know, the resolution that we're voting on later shows that bonds in the maximum aggregate principal amount of 5.5 million for the purpose of financing all or portion of the city's water system.
Yes, the extra half a million is the fees.
Fees, okay. All right. And then just a comment, I did a little cursory research on the company that's gotten the bid. And it looks like they did the, what, the four million gallon tank for Two-Ton, Hupp and Rogers.
Correct.
You know, we can see the work that they've done. Everybody came in line. This, sometimes you worry with, with the low bid, are you getting the best person to do the job?
Unfortunately, there's only about four companies that can do it and they all bid on it.
And, but I think even with the low bid, I think we got a pretty good comp to do it.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, so I guess we, we move this on to city council to approve?
Please.
Any, any questions? I don't, I don't know that we.
Did we make that motion?
No, we did not.
I'll make a motion that we move it.
Go, go.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yeah.
Right. Next, we have a discussion of water rate increase. James will be sending you attachments, James Clark.
Yes, sir. I did put an extra few pieces of paper on your, on your desk today. Just kind of a, more of an explanation or an example of what, you know, the water rates or the water bills will look like on the first page, based on 4,000 gallons usage, which is a nationally recognized average. And this is for residential rate inside the city limits. So as you can see, the, the increase for water is going to be about $5.12 on a 4,000 gallon bill. Yes. And that is showing an increase, not just in the water rate, but also a $3 across the board increase in the base rate. And the base rate is really there to take care of all the administrative cost. That will, with 3,000 meters, that will generate about $9,000 a month or 108,000 a year. Also hoping at some point to kind of steer that money toward the fixed base meter reading system.
Questions?
Let me just state for the record, both to you and anybody else listening, I really hate raising fees of any kind. I don't like the idea of impact fees. I don't like the idea of raising taxes. I don't like the idea of any of this stuff. Raising water. I happen to be on Washington Water. They're raising our rates. This rate increase is nearly a 13% increase. I, I understand it's only five bucks, but from a percentage standpoint, that's, I mean, that's pretty significant. But here's the problem. I've, I've used this analogy before, even with Mr. Clark. If you own a doughnut shop and you're selling doughnuts for a dollar, but it costs you a buck 13 to make a doughnut, you can't do it and stay in business. And where we are as a city is we've got an infrastructure that desperately needs to be updated and we've got too many people on it. And because of that, the costs to us as a city, we just cannot keep up. So I am not crazy about increasing water rates or any other rate for that matter. And I know you absolutely don't want to do this and never did. But we have to do what we have to do. So with that said, thank you for the work on it. And, and I, I'm all for moving it on for a vote.
Will this be, we increase them now, will we look at it again next year?
Oh, yeah, we're, we're going to see a water rate increase at least yearly.
Yeah.
Two-Ton is getting ready to do a new rate study. Part of this increase is going to Two-Ton, 25 cents per thousand. And they've had that in place for the last three years. They'll do a new rate study this year and they'll project what the rates are going, or the increases will be for the next three to five years.
Daniel?
Also, the, the second page is more just putting the numbers in a different, different form for you to look at instead of the ordinance. But the third and fourth pages are what us people that live in Springdale receive from Springdale Water this month. And you could see they used us as a comparison down in their little bar chart there under the graph. Their increase, I mean, I know, I'm not trying to compare us to Springdale, but they are going from $18.28 for the first 1,000 gallons to $28, which I think is about a 34% increase. Everybody is going to be doing it. There's no way. And it's something we talk about at all, water meetings, wastewater meetings, you know, these cities are just not able to make it on what, what they, what they're getting in revenue. So Springdale implemented impact fees. Centerton's talking about it now and I think you'll see it, it'll be common within the next couple of years of, of every city doing that because the cost of, of infrastructure has just gotten so outrageous. And with the growth, you know, there's the demand for the infrastructure.
I know not everybody gets, gets their news or newspaper, but I still get it digitally. And it's every week that you can read, Farmington's doing something down there. I read that. As you say, this was in the paper, Springdale, five-year plan. Look out there at five-year for Springdale.
Yeah.
It, it's incredible. So as, as Mr. Burris has said, I don't like to increase anything on anybody. But as he's also said, we as a city can't bear the burden. So we have to do what we have to do.
Am I reading this right on this chart? The green line is the current rate of every city?
Yes, current water and sewer combined.
Okay. So we're, we're highest of all of them. I mean, I understand the increased need, but that's already the highest.
Mr. Clark, I'd just like to point out on the Springdale chart, you know, at the 4,000 gallons, their current rate to the, the first January raise is $14, where ours is $5.12.
Right.
Okay. Right now, our implementation on impact fees, what are we at? We at 100% or 25?
We're, we're at 50% of the total maximum allowed. And I think, I put, that's on the second page also. That tells you down there at the bottom, what our total cost is with a water tap, sewer tap, water and sewer impact fees, and then just the impact fees only to the, to the right there. Those are current as of last month.
If we were at 100% implementation, would we be seeing this water rate increase or would those impact fees?
Yes, because the impact fees are not for operations and maintenance.
Maintenance to existing.
Yeah, right. That we've still got to maintain and, and operate the system. And we don't get, we can't get help from the impact fees. That's only for new, new infrastructure.
Would the impact fee, kind of jumping back to what we already talked about on the water tank build, would we be able to use those impact fees on that water tank that we're short on?
Yes.
I do have one more question. So the base rate you said is administrative. What, what exactly does that cover?
Well, billing and the water clerk, even some of my salary is all part of that administration cost.
And you think the $3 per household is, that's pretty high to, to, were justified in increasing that $3 because the fees have increased that much?
I believe so, yes.
How, like, how did you derive that number?
Well, like I say, the other thought on that is, or plan for it is to implement the fixed base meter reading. And so that will go toward the administrative cost or implementing that system and the system itself.
Just to clarify something, Councilwoman Abara had a, a great question about the fees there and, and how we compare on the Springdale piece. I'm not sure where they got their numbers because on the 4,000 gallon piece where it shows their current cost is 4301 and our current cost is for, for water is 4022. That particular graph is showing just water. So water to water, we're 4301 at Springdale and 4022 here. And on the total, if that's 9601 total, we don't see Springdale's total cost here. So I would like to see the, the data behind here. But even if those costs are different, it, it costs different things to run.
Sure.
Different cars and different houses, et cetera. So, but thank you.
And of course, the last page gives you a good comparison about what 1,000 gallons of water might cost you if you bought it at the store or if you bought 1,000 gallons of coffee at Starbucks or 1,000 gallons of soda. Not really a good comparison, but you know, it, it's still the most economical utility that you have.
Starbucks water is definitely better.
Really?
No, um, that's me, obviously.
And I failed to ask if we had any citizens comment before we jumped in on this or anybody online, which I assumed there was nobody.
I just had a couple of things. I, I'd say I have a little heartburn over the minimum bill. The increase is 17 and a half percent, going from 17 to 20. I know with the water worth thing that we got, our rate increase on the usage is in line with what they recommended. So I, I don't really have any problem with that. I mean, is it necessary to do both today? I mean, or can we say, okay, if we're going to do the minimum bill today along with a rate increase for usage, can we guarantee that we won't raise the minimum bill or at least the next election cycle? Can we go two years without raising the minimum rate? I mean?
Yeah, I, I think the base rate can stay. I mean, where we're at now has been the same since, gosh, it's been the same for at least 10 years because it was 17 or 1880. We actually lowered it, whatever that's been for, five years ago, when we passed the bond to pay for the transmission line in the tank. We lowered it from 1880 to $17 just for the residential to try to help sell that. Plus, you know, give, get the residential customers a little break.
Well, that's probably the first time in history the government's actually giving back to the citizens. But so, yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's not a, I, I, I know you, it's like buying gas for your car. You pay for what you use and, and that's kind of like with the water too. But for those who don't miss much, I mean, it is, and it's not a lot of money. I get it. It's $3 a month. But you know, for a lot of people, it's, every penny counts in the budget.
But yes, I, I think it can stay, the base rate can stay for probably three to four years.
We willing to put that in writing in this, in this thing?
I'm sure.
Better not do that.
I, I, okay, I'll do it for two years. I mean, I, I won't vote for another, I'll just be on record and say, I will not vote to increase the minimum bill while I'm sitting here, at least for the next two years.
Base rate?
Rates, I know, usage rates, I understand. We got, we've got a proposal we saw on the charts. If we don't increase our rates, our, our cash position is off the charts. We're underwater. Not unintended, we're underwater in less than five years. So we're going to have to increase usage rates. I mean, that, that's, I mean, we're getting it from Two-Ton. We're going to, it's just the cost of doing business in the city. But if we can just put that caveat in there to not, to stay flat on the minimum rate if, if.
Like I say, it's been flat for, for about the last 10 years.
And that's good to hear. So we're not willy-nilly just tacking it on to the users here. So.
But yeah, of that 53 cents increase, like I said, 25, 25 cents of that is going straight to Two-Ton. So we're getting the 28 cents.
Okay. Even, even if we don't put it in writing, I'm just going to go and say, I won't, I won't vote for another minimum bill increase for the next two years. I understand the rates for usage, but.
I'm, I'm kind of with you. I, I understand the usage increase. It's the base rate increase that I'm struggling with a little bit. It, it seems like it's just a number that we just sort of threw out there. I know we want to get this new system. I don't know. It seems like a pretty steep, well, it is. It's a pretty steep base rate increase. Usage totally get, base rates, just, I don't, I don't understand the justification that high, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Should the, should that new system be included in the meter fee maybe? I mean, what, what's the meter fee?
Meter fee goes to Washington Water.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Two-Ton.
Okay, so that goes to them?
Yes.
Gotcha. So that's why it's in the base rate for that new system?
Correct. Yeah, they charge the $1.50 per meter per month.
Gotcha. And then, so on the new system that we're talking about where we don't have to go out and, is that, I'm assuming that's the system we're talking about where we don't have to go out and read them manually. We're able to see it right from the computer inside the.
Correct.
What does this system cost?
Well, if you wanted to.
Outright.
Just outright buy it and replace every meter in town, you know, we're looking at a million and a half dollars. I mean, obviously that's not something we could do anytime soon. What we're hoping to do is start implementing it just a little bit every year. I got a quote from the meter company. They will provide us the software and 144 meters and a way to read them for about $60,000. Obviously, that's a long ways from a million and a half, but that will get us started. Like I said, get us the reading software and everything we need to, to use that. And we just keep adding to it every year. I mean, I always budget about $75,000 a year just to purchase meters. So I think we could use that this year. And that should get us, we're, we're projecting 140 new homes this year, just as a, you know, to have a number. And so that will get us all the meters we need for this year, plus get us started on the, the fixed base system.
Seventy-five thousand is budgeted for meters. How many, how much do these new meters cost per meter?
Um, about two, about $250.
$250 each. Okay.
So how many, how many, how many homes do we service water to in Tonty Town?
Al- almost 3,000.
So 75,000 would get us 300 homes.
Uh-huh.
At that price.
Does this fixed rate system? Does this, uh, fixed rate system help with water loss?
Yes.
So.
As a matter of fact, it's more, it's more of a help to us than, than really to the customer even.
So we're, I mean, what, 25 to 30% water loss?
Uh, we've been under that the last couple of months.
But we have been as high as 30.
Yes.
So any guarantees from this company? We will help you reduce your water loss by X amount.
I don't know that they would give you a guarantee on that, but I mean, cause all they're doing is providing the product. We've still got to take the, the information, the data that we gather from the system and, and, and find the leaks ourselves. But at least what we can do, we can read the meters every day and know how much water we've purchased every day, how much we've sold every day, um, instead of, you know, getting that figure once a month.
So theoretically, you could recoup that money just by not losing as much.
Possibly, possibly recoup all of it.
After about 30 years.
I don't know if it would take that long if you go from 25% to 7%.
Right, but we've already reduced it to what?
Um, 19% was the last, uh, the last one that I.
Is that a guarantee that it goes that low?
It's not, but. No, as a matter of fact, I mean, 10% is about the best you can ever hope for.
I'd, I'd tell you we shoot for 10%.
That's what we're shooting for.
I'd love to see some math on it. The last time we talked about it, um, or that I remember talking about it in this room, uh, some of that was the time spent. And I did some quick math and it, it seemed ridiculous that we would spend 750,000, I think was the price then, instead of having somebody drive around town in a day. Um, since then, I haven't heard any, any updates. So it would be awesome to hear all the amazing, cool things that that, that that does. Um, and, and, and obviously water loss will be part of that. Uh, but, um, I need to know it's more than just a shiny new toy.
Oh yeah, definitely. Yeah. And before we purchase anything from them, I'm going to have the meter, uh, representative here to do a, a presentation for you.
Fantastic. Thank you. Appreciate that.
I've got one more question. On the existing meters we have, how much do those cost per?
Um, they're about the same, really.
They're 250 bucks.
Yeah. By the time you buy the, the transmitter, uh, and the meter, yeah, it's, it's 250 bucks.
They last longer? Do they have a longer warranty or anything like that?
They've all got a 20-year warranty, um, and that's, uh, only because they haven't, you know, determined fully what the, the battery life is on them. Uh, since it's still kind of a new, uh, technology.
I see the benefits. I mean, water loss is a big thing. Um, technology's always moving forward. So I, I totally understand the desire to have it and can see the benefits to it. It's just the price tag that comes with it that.
Right.
One more time, Mike.
May I change subjects back to, uh, the minimum rate? Um, I know Ms. Abara and I both have some heartburn over the increase. How about, uh, we go back to the rate it was before it was reduced?
1880? Is that the one you're talking, referring to?
I mean, I know it's, yes, that's the one I'm talking about.
Well, we only did that on the residential customers inside the city limits.
Oh, okay.
So it's, yeah, I mean.
So we need it.
So the others would, would stay the same if we did that.
So the existing customers are 1880 now? The ones that are not within the city limits?
Correct.
So it would be a dollar and 20 cents difference to them or is everybody going to go to 20?
Well, based on meter size.
Well, yeah, exactly, but residential, are all residents going to go to 20 regardless of location?
Correct. Yeah, the residential rate and then the industrial rate are higher, but the red, uh, all inside and outside. No, I take that back. The outside rate is actually, uh, it goes up 10% also. So, uh, residential inside is going from 533 to 586. Residential outside city limits goes from 675 to 742.
So how many of the 3,000 are inside and how many are outside of the 3,000 we service?
I don't know that exact number off the top of my head. Uh, we're probably 200 to 300 that are outside city limits.
We're talking, okay.
So, sorry, this, this is just a repetitive question. We are increasing the base rate to, to basically save up for this new system. So it's not that we have to increase it by $3. It's just what we're trying to do to afford this system sooner. So we could not necessarily increase it by $3. We, we could increase it some, but not to that level.
That's correct.
It's just, we'd get there a little slower.
Right.
And you cannot use impact fees for this system, for the new.
Correct.
Meters.
Can we use it on other things that offset it? It's a great question.
Can we use it on other things that offset?
That, I mean, we, we, we need to spend this much money, right? If we can't spend impact fees on this, can we spend impact fees on something else?
To replace it?
Within our sphere to replace that spending? To help offset the cost?
Um.
I've seen it.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm trying to think how that would work. I mean, basically your impact fees are only for new construction or replacement of old meters or old lines. So we're basically using capital improvement money to do that now. I guess in a way we could do that, but we don't have that much money in our capital budget in order to, you know, present you with a balanced budget.
When, when were you hoping to have Tawny Town on this whole new system? Like how many years down the road? Is this something we can put in our budget and implement over five years?
It's something we're trying to find grant money for.
Okay.
Uh, and there has been some out there, uh, there's just not right at this time. Um, I think there will be again, uh, something, uh, like the ARPA funds. I think, uh, we may see more, uh, federal government help, uh, for infrastructure.
This year? You're trying for a grant this year?
Well, we're looking for one, yes.
And when we get ARPA funds, don't they want us to increase our rates in order to pay them back?
Uh, that's ANRC.
ANRC.
Yeah, the ARPA funds is the American Rescue Plan Act.
Essentially grants.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, which we did apply for money from them and, uh, we weren't able to get any. But a lot of people did, uh, and, and most of it went to the wastewater side. Just had a meeting, uh, yesterday morning where, uh, a lot of, uh, legislators, senators and, and representatives, uh, met with, uh, the health department down here in Johnson. Uh, and a lot of engineers and they're trying to figure out why, uh, some of these cities up here are not able to move forward with some, uh, large-scale development projects. And it's basically because a lot of cities are at capacity on sewer and it has become a real issue. Uh, there's probably a billion dollars that need to be spent in Northwest Arkansas, uh, over the next five to 10 years, uh, just to keep up with the growth. And, uh, I mean, there's a whole myriad of problems that go along with it. Uh, most, uh, uh, treatment plants in the smaller cities for sure, they don't have the money to, you know, do a 80, 100 million dollar plant upgrade. Um, and, uh, some, I mean, someone even asked, you know, could we get another treatment plant permitted in Northwest Arkansas? And really the answer to that is no. Um, nothing, no new plants that will discharge into the Illinois River water basin. Um, so, you know, they're, they're trying to push, the health department's trying to push, uh, someone to do a major regional wastewater plant. We're kind of above, uh, ahead of the curve, but you know, we're already going to a regional plant. But, uh, there, there needs to be more of that. And, and the downside to that is in order to permit a plant, it's going to have to discharge to the south as far as Fort Smith. Um, so like I said, it.
And Fort Smith's already having some issues. They've got $25 million that they've got to.
There, there are issues all over Northwest Arkansas as far as sewer goes. And I think it's going to be, it's going to be a real problem in the next few years. I mean, they're projecting the growth, but if you can't.
One, Mr. Hester, is he?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, guys, I guess, uh, what, what, uh, what do we want to do as far as the base rate or we could be here all night?
What are you comfortable with as far as the base rate? Dollar 50, $2?
Well, we were 1880 and then.
Dropped it back to 17.
For in-town.
Yeah. For residential in-town.
Yes, so.
Well, if, if the $20 gets us to the goal faster, which obviously it will. Um, again, with the caveat that, you know, I just, I can't, I won't vote for another one, uh, at least for the next two years. And, you know, if I'm here beyond that, it's especially since we've found out that we had the last one for 10. Um, I'll bite the bullet this time and just stay with the 20.
Or what would you think about decreasing that and being okay with a, an increase up to what they were asking in maybe five or six years?
Well.
I'm sorry.
You know what I mean? Like do 1850, but with the understanding that we know we should probably increase that now several years.
I could go with that motion.
It just makes it less painful.
Um, what, would my fellow council members be amenable to tabling this? I, I didn't realize that this base rate was putting us toward this fixed reading system, uh, which I'm not, again, I'm not crazy about. I'm not sold on that at all by any stretch of the imagination. But maybe it makes sense to look at that, to get an idea of what that looks like, how we get there before we make this. Because as I said earlier, I don't want to increase rates willy-nilly. I do recognize inflation is what it is and the costs of things are going up. Uh, I thought that's what was all baked into this. I'm fine with that. If it's something beyond that, then that very much changes my thinking. I understand we do need to do something and I hate to table it when we need to do something. But would you guys be open to a further discussion before we make this a done deal?
When could you have us, uh, some data and information on the system so we can understand it better, to understand how this progress would work?
I can have it, I can have, uh, someone here next month at the Cal meeting.
They'll talk cost, all the things, okay.
All the benefits.
Yep.
Help us understand what, where we can gain it back.
Okay.
And also if we could with that, um, just kind of, and I know you're not a crystal ball, you don't have one. But if you can kind of give us some idea, I know, I mean, I know we've got, um, most of 300 houses, you know, come up between Morsani and Kelly Road. And presumably within the next two years. So if we could kind of get a ballpark, if, if we go to $20, how fast do we get to the goal? Uh, of what you want?
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I can put some information.
If, if you're good, uh, I mean, I think more information is always better. Um, then, you know, we're not trying to, you know, I, I know you want to get, get the ball moving on this too, but, um, I can sit behind your table.
Okay, and, and if we do that, can we table it for a couple of months so we can hear them? I mean, again, I know you don't want that, but we're not going to be prepared after hearing them talk next week to know exactly what we do going forward. Before we vote on it, but we're voting on something that we can't really, when we don't know what that is.
Well, we kind of have an idea.
Okay, well, what, whatever, what, whatever y'all think.
If, if, if we.
And the other, if somebody wants to table, I'll absolutely support it. Not a problem.
I'm promoting to table this to February Cal meeting.
The other point is, as of January 1, uh, Two Ton has increased their rates.
Yep.
So we're falling behind.
Yeah.
So.
So the longer we put it off, the further behind we are on that.
I'll, I'll second, uh, Councilmember, uh, Biazas.
Well, table's a table, so.
Table, yeah.
We're, we're done.
A table is a table, there you go.
And we're done.
Did we vote?
Done with discussion. I don't think you don't have to have a.
Think you got to vote. We've always voted on tables.
Do you want to do that? I thought Justin said table's a table. Okay, go ahead and second it and we'll do a roll call.
I, I, I will second it.
Yeah.
Tim?
Roll call.
Daniel?
No.
Larry?
No.
Tim?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Motion table passes to the next Cal meeting.
Okay, next, I'm sorry, excuse me. Next we have a discussion of a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the U.S. Department of Transportation, rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity. Raise Grant. Mr. Latham.
Just to remind you, we did, uh, apply for the FEMA grant for a new fire truck. That was, uh, put into place, I believe, uh, December 20th. So, uh, we'll see how that goes. This is another grant that we are, are in the process of, uh, applying for. It's called the, uh, Raise Grant, which is actually a, the U.S. Department of Transportation, rebuilding America infrastructure. Staff along with Simple Grants is working to complete this application. Um, I think I mentioned to you all, this is South Barrington. This will be actually what they call a complete street. Which will go from Barrington all the way down to Tado Loop, which will be a three-lane curb and gutter. It'll have sidewalks, it'll have a trail, it'll have streets, I mean, trees, it'll have lighting, special lighting on it. And, uh. Zach's already put a kind of concept plan together, so it will be submitted with the grant. Um, and so we need a resolution from the council just in support of this. The great news about this, and I think I mentioned to you this, is typically grants are 80/20. Um, because the majority of this area is in a rural area, it's 100%. Um, that was clarified through our, uh, our grant writer, Simple Grants. He reached out to the transportation to make sure, cause part of the area along Westbrook is not really urban. It's more urban than it is rural. But, uh, they indicated the, um, that they would look at that as all rural instead of urban. So, um, we're excited about putting this grant together, um, and, uh, see where it goes.
What's the timeline on this grant?
You know, I really don't know. As soon as we get it applied for, I'll, I'll ask. Any questions?
Questions?
They had the, uh, didn't they have the disbursement times in the, that booklet that you gave us from Simple Grants?
Disbursement.
Disbursement of funds, if, if you're awarded the grant. I mean, uh, there's a timeline for, uh, there's a deadline for when this has to be submitted.
Yeah, this is in the, I think it's the end of this month.
Yeah, I was thinking it was pretty quick. But I thought there was also, and I don't have my booklet with me, but, um, when the awards were granted or, or grants were awarded, I'm sorry, uh, was also listed on that, for that Raise Grant.
I can go look at it. It's pretty close. I thought it was the end of the year, I mean, the end of the month, but maybe it's sooner than that.
I'm talking about when they, when they.
Dispersed?
If they award you, uh, the funds. I thought it said in there when they would do it, but it may be I'm.
Do you remember that?
I don't.
Okay.
You know, I just remember looking through, I, I did look at that one in particular because I'd heard you talking about it before. I just don't have my materials with me on the Raise Grant to find out when it was, but surely it's within the calendar year.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
And includes, I mean, includes paying for our high-priced engineer and, you know, all the good stuff.
No, I think it's great. Um, there's kids walking that road right now to get to the bus stop from Tado Loop.
Well, I tell you what.
It's incredible.
The, the, when you talk to the grant consultant, you know, the thing that makes this really good is. The, the, when you talk to the grant consultant, you know, the thing that makes this really good is, uh, school safety issue. It really is. I mean, you got, if you go south, as you guys know, I mean, there's still, uh, areas of subdivisions. And, you know, if a kid wants to walk to school, they have to walk to school on the road. And we've had a couple of families have contacted me about sidewalks, uh, being able to get to school. This also provides protective type traffic for pedestrians. So you push the button, it flashes, you know, because that's going to get busy when Fletcher Gate opens up, so. Um, but it'll make it safer too for kids where you can actually, you know, get to the park. But just something that would be great, so.
I can make.
Any other questions?
I believe so.
I make a motion, we move this to.
I think the mayor has, has a question, comment, concern.
I just wanted to make sure the council was aware that it is a hundred percent at this time. Um, if, if it is brought back up at a later time, we may not qualify because it would be out of the.
Could be in the urban, yeah.
It'll be in the urban, right, it'll be out of the rural area, so.
Now's the time.
Now's the time.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Next, we have a discussion of replacing or repairing an out-of-service fire truck. Chief Krug. I'm prepared.
So I don't have any numbers for you guys, though we're still waiting on the quote. Um, just wanted to move it to the council meetings if you guys wanted to repair the motor and the fire engine that blew up on Christmas.
Comments from council?
Happy holidays and Merry Christmas to you. Uh, Chief Krug and I had a chance to chat about this earlier. Uh, the idea is that we try to get it fixed again, right? And then we're putting out a grant to try to get another, but we need a truck and we need a truck even if we're leaping through for a time, correct?
Yes.
So, uh, is there, is there another play other than trying to get that engine fixed now?
We can try to replace it with a used truck if we can find one for a reasonable price.
And you told me a reasonable price was somewhere between two hundred and fifty and three hundred and fifty thousand, is that right?
Yes, still looking at a fifteen-year-old truck.
Okay.
With no guarantees.
With no guarantees. The motor might go out in a month after we get it.
Yep.
So.
We discussed, you, you anticipated between thirty and forty thousand dollars, is that correct?
Um. The, the estimate that the guy told me today was forty-five thousand for the motor and, um, he's saying we need to rebuild the turbo and there's some other things that they found wrong with, uh, with the truck as well, so. That's why they haven't sent the quote over yet because they're trying to get everything in one, one quote.
Well, as, as much as it, as it hurts, we've got, we've got to have fire trucks and it got to be able to run down the road, so. Comments?
Yeah, hundreds less than two fifty.
Yeah.
So, um, any warranties with the work that's been presumably going to be performed?
I, I can't tell you for sure, but.
Okay.
Uh, most of the time when they rebuild a motor, there's a warranty on, on that part of it, but you still run a chance of the pump, you know.
Other things.
Next month or the transmission or any other part of the truck that can break because it is thirty-two years old and so.
Right, how old is this? What, what year is this truck?
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three.
It's older than me.
That's not right.
I would, I would be hesitant to buying a used truck and, you know, without any assurance that it's going to last us, you know, like you said, a month. Um. It's just always better to buy something new that you, you know, you know, comes with a warranty and stuff like that. We're, we're throwing three hundred thousand at a used truck and it busts down on us, then we're, then we got two busted-down fire trucks.
I mean, there's still plenty wrong with this truck. I don't want to give you guys the illusion that it's a perfectly running truck. I mean, there's.
So.
Um, there's numerous things, the back windows don't roll up in the truck.
Is there a possibility of a new?
They're stuck halfway down and, um, they don't roll up, leaks water in the cab, I mean, there's numerous minor things wrong with it. So.
So.
It should last until the new truck comes in. And ultimately, when the new truck comes in, we would put this one as a reserve truck. In case anything does happen to the new truck, we would be able to run the reserve truck for short periods of time.
So that, that, yeah, that's kind of my question, the new trucks replacing this one.
Yes, the ones.
Okay.
Twenty and twenty-six.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I.
Wish we could buy you another day one, chief, sorry.
I think this, the repairing is the best band-aid we have right now, I think.
So the next question, this has to wait till council board can be approved, right? So I mean, if they come back tomorrow and say they have their total quote and it's X number of dollars, it still has to wait the two weeks before we can approve them to start working.
I think you could have a special.
Yeah.
You got a couple council members together, I think you could have a special.
Just let us know.
I like pizza for supper.
But anything.
I like fire trucks.
Okay, uh, so need a motion to, to approve this?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Who seconded?
I did.
And this is to move it to council?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Next, we have a discussion of code of ordinance review updates. Ready? Absolutely.
Good evening, everyone. Wanted to wish everybody Merry Christmas, hope you had a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Um.
Well, thank you all, the Fire Department on New Year's.
What's that?
Never mind.
Oh. Um, what you have in your packet and we have submitted to you guys. Um, over the last year or so, uh, as we have discussed in the planning department and we've had large-scale developments and, uh, preliminary plats come through, we have went through our code extensively and have found that there's, sometimes there's things up for, uh, subjective interpretation, uh, maybe not always clear. And so over the last year, we have tried to sit down as a staff, uh, along with Zach and, uh, tried to, tried to clean some of this information up. Uh, two particular, uh, codes that, uh, chapters that we have in our code that we've tried to address is our development code in chapter one fifty-two subdivision regulations and also our zoning regulations in chapter one fifty-three. And so what I have submitted to you for your discussion, for your review, whether you choose to move it tonight or have a chance to review it, uh, are information that we have put together along with Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission, which you will see notes tied to that. Uh, what you will see in red on the screen and, uh, probably have on your, uh, packet as well. You can see where we've added or we have amended. And there again, like I said, we've had notes, uh, on the side as well that goes along with this. So, uh, I know it's a lot of information. Uh, the other thing is that, uh, you charged the planning commission, I think, black, back in October about our facades and we moved that back to planning commission. We did take that in the planning commission in November, discussed it, everybody was fine with it. And they've also been fine with, uh, the additions of our code, uh, to move forward for you guys to discuss so we can codify this. Um, so along with that and the facade information that you sent back to the commission to discuss has been approved and move forward for you guys to discuss as well. So, uh, if you're going to ask me a lot of questions about what's in here, I'll do my best, but, uh, it is for your review. And like I said, what you choose to move it forward to vote on, uh, it will have to be an ordinance form to codify in our code, so. Any questions?
But there's a lot to digest and.
Exactly, exactly.
And, um, it, it looks to me, am I wrong, but, um, uh, all this in red, uh, minimum improvements by application type is all, is it all new?
It's all additional, yes.
So, yeah, that, that's kind of what I, uh.
Yes.
Thought, because there, I mean, I don't think there's any way that.
And that's why, yeah, that's why I said that.
Put on this and.
I mean, you got two weeks, I figure you cram real hard and.
Yeah. Because there, there is a lot in here.
Yeah. And it, and you know, like I said, it took us, you know, six months at least just to kind of brainstorm with, with this along with the Northwest Arkansas Planning Commission, uh, to come up with this information for you guys, so. But this should make things more clear, uh, not up to debate as much. Uh, so like I said, this is, this is why that was brought forward to you now.
Four times and I'm still, uh, rereading them, um.
With, with you.
I appreciate all the work that's went into this and that y'all reached out and got help to make sure we're getting it the best as possible, so. Um, definitely planning to maybe take those planning classes this year, so maybe I can understand.
Well, they, they, yes, they've started accepting the, the module applications for that if you choose to do so, so.
So.
Mayor?
I just know, I wanted to let, wanted to let the council know, not only did Brad and Zach mark, there has been a lot of people that have come together and talked this over. We've had a lot of our planning commissioners, um, come in and speak about it, discuss it, decide what they thought would be best for the city. And I know then it was taken to, uh, Tim Conklin for, uh, Northwest Regional Planning. So there has been a lot of work, I think Zach started on this whenever he was still here at the city. So that's how long that they've been working on this. And as, as other issues have come up, it has been added as well.
Yes.
So I appreciate your work and thank you everybody.
Absolutely.
I do have one question about the one, uh, the single page at the back that says proposed revision building design commercial, institutional triplex, quadplex. What, what code number is that?
That is for the facade, uh, that you guys had looked at.
One fifty-two, point one five-one?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yes. And this is, this was planning commission's, uh, recommendation to move forward.
This is much more detailed.
Yes. Yep. Hopefully more clear.
Yeah, you can't, probably can't eliminate every possibility, but you know, you, you'll know.
As they come up, we'll have to review as well.
Definitely more clear or more thorough, I should say.
And my only comment on this is, is, is the mayor said, there was a lot of time never put in on this and I could read this all day long and, and still walk away ignorant as I look, so, uh, and that's pretty ignorant. So, uh, I'm going to approve because these guys put in the effort and it's something that, that, that's, that's why we have a planning department, planning commission. Well, there again, I, I don't, I don't want to force this on anybody because like I said, it is a lot of information, so. But it was presented for you to review and then you guys can make your recommendation to move forward at some point to approve it, so.
Yeah, I think we'll need a little more time because there are some, these blocks, I mean, there are some questions and, and do you want us to kind of fill in the answers on that, like?
Well, as, yeah, as you review it, you know, by all means, get in touch with us and, uh, we can either set up a time to talk or come by individually and we can definitely try to hash everything out to make it more presentable as an ordinance when we do codify it.
Because, yeah, see, I mean, a lot of these comments and questions look like they do need to be squeezed into the, the code itself.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, is, is there any plan to, for, do you want us to take these comments and questions that are on the side and fill in what we want to, or is there?
Well, and I, you know, we, we could probably all, all, six of you guys have different opinions on everything. We want to do what's best for the city, so you can look at the comments that have been presented, uh, maybe discuss one with another, come discuss with us as a staff. Give us your opinion, what you feel is, what you think is necessary or would like to see, and we can definitely take it from that standpoint and, you know, like I said, make, make it work for everybody, you know, so.
I just didn't know if there was a plan to, I mean, this is all red line to come with one that was, you know, basically.
Well, they, they, these are, these are our, these are our recommendations. Planning, planning commission has approved our recommendations. Um, like I said, there again, it's for you guys to look over and discuss and feel if it's acceptable to move forward so we can codify the code. Okay, this is, now I'm asking a real dumb question, okay, like this particular one on the screen now, training city employees, it is completely lined through, is that not part of the? Yeah, anything that you say taken through, or if there's a comment off to the side, what the recommendation may be, because Zach can hear it up.
Just real quick, just so you understand, the comments that you see presented were from Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning. And so we sat down with them, we've got to go through one of those line items and we kind of decided whether or not we wanted to actually implement those. So that one, the tree one, um, they wanted to do some sort of training. Right now, none of the city staff actually participates in city, in tree planting or, uh, what's it, what was it, how's it worded? Training to cut trees. We got a chainsaw, if we need it, we'll cut it. So I said, let's take it out. I don't think there's, we're not even implementing it, it's in the code, let's just take it out. So there, there were some common sense stuff, so.
What about the basic tree science and proper techniques of tree pruning, Zach?
If you want to, uh, if you want to actually enforce that code, I'll let you do it personally.
I'm good. I'm good.
Okay.
So. Uh. I'm kind of curious, we, we want to just.
I, I just, there's no necessary rush. I, I didn't know what was presented tonight, maybe we can get your cleaned up version so you can see, you know. The red was to show you what's changed, right?
Yeah.
But stuff stroking through, that would be stuff we're taking out, the new red stuff we're putting in, um.
Maybe a version that didn't have the comments.
Yeah, I think that's what, if I was looking at that, that throw me off too.
Yeah.
We've already gone through.
I do too.
I like the comments out there, but it doesn't need to be codified like that.
No, absolutely not, but if anything is to show you, this is what the regional planning thought of our codes and we kind of actually.
I think it's.
Took some of those and went, eh, a little fluffy, but.
Yeah.
So.
I appreciate it, I mean, it's, and I know y'all worked hard on this, so.
I think we can get your cleaned up version before we do anything permanent, that'd be fun.
Yeah, that'd be, uh, that, and then, uh, we can compare it to the red lines that we have here.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe then there'll be other things to discuss, but I, I think, uh, uh, with it, the way it is right now is really hard.
Those, I mean.
Okay, appreciate that.
Yeah, not to force it, and, and those comments do come from the regional planning commission that deal with codes from all across Northwest Arkansas. So they're, they're bringing an input from other places that maybe we weren't considering when we went through it, so just give you a little background.
Thank you very much.
So what do we need to do here? Just, uh, we discussed and that's where we're at?
I think we probably need to absorb that, try to get a better understanding, talk to you guys a little more, especially if there's no rush. We, I, I would rather do it right than do it fast. Unless you want to, unless you want to do it right fast.
Yeah, Brad is available daily, by the way, so. Zach is too, different location. Okay. Okay, everybody happy with where we're at on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, next, we have a discussion of an approval for a resolution to accept the dedications contained in final subdivision plats approved by the city council. Mr. Spurlock? I know this is what you guys love, so, um, this should be the last lengthy, uh, resolution that should come forward for you for accepting the right of ways and such, uh, to kind of clean up some of last year's information. Um, so this is a continuation from, uh, previous year. Uh, everything has been updated, everything has been vetted by myself and by Madeline. Uh, but there again, you have a chance to review it, you do have a couple of weeks, uh, if you do see anything in there. But, uh, one thing that I will show, James, you'll go back down there, um, once again, this is, the first names are the ones that was presented to us for their application. Gives us what kind of, uh, incidental project it was, gives us also the parcel numbers, anything that's in parentheses outside those parcel numbers to the right is the current ownership of that parcel. So if you have any questions, by all means, like I said, you got a couple. The one that I did want to show you, the Ahern and Walker family incidental, I've got like a little combination font there and those two were tied together, they're two separate ownerships, but they were tied together in the incidental.
Mr. Spurlock, thank you. I vetted it too. I found no mistakes whatsoever, but it's so much easier to read the way that you've done it. Thank you very, very much.
And like I said, this going forward should not be near as lengthy, so. Okay, thank you.
Can, I, I do have one, the minor subdivision designation.
It, it's, it's, it's an incidental and in our, you know, we have it classified as a minor subdivision, lot split, property line adjustment. They all are included in the incidental.
Okay, because one of them, it looked like it was about a one-point-five acres, another one looks like it's fifteen acres.
It's just how they, they signed the application is what we do.
Okay, so.
But it, you know, from an incidental standpoint, it's all one and the same.
All right.
Yep.
That's the only question I had, and I did do some vetting too, I didn't vet every one of them, but, uh, I saw no mistakes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That particular one was eleven point one five acres. Oh, wow. Brain numbers, sorry.
Anybody else? Any comments? Anybody online? Negative? Okay, I guess.
That'll be need to move forward.
I will make a mo, go ahead, Misty.
Make a motion to approve or to move this to council.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
All right, I guess we have comments. One more. Excuse me, sorry, because I already asked about this. We have a resolution of intent regarding capital improvements. Mr. Latham? And you talked about it earlier, but I'll let you talk about it again.
Want me to talk about it again?
Again, this is a reimbursement resolution to be able to reimburse our expenses from anything that's spent before the bond closing. Um, I did, I forgot to mention too is, is I'm sure Cory is going to be coming forward in the purchase of land for the new police station. Um, so that'll be actually needs to, we need to know that before we hire an architect because he needs to know where you're going to place this thing at when they start developing the plan. So hopefully you'll support moving this forward to the council meeting two weeks.
Comments from citizens? Questions, comments from council? Need a motion?
Make a motion to move this to council.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Daniel?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Mike?
Uh, yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Now, now we shall have comments from our council members. Daniel?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and with the implement weather that might be coming up to Northwest Arkansas. I just ask everybody to, you know, use your best judgment and stay home if you, if you can. And if you got to get out, just be careful.
Misty?
Uh, thank you everybody for coming out tonight. Um, new year, new beginnings. May many blessings come our way. If there's anything you'd like to see us to do in the city, I know we have our Bochi tournament. We're bringing the car show back in the fall and then Halloween in the park. But if there's other things you'd like to see, let us know. We're always open to see how we can continue to bring the community together. So, thank you.
Amber?
Yep, thank you to everyone who came and I have nothing else.
Mike?
Uh, yeah, I don't really have anything tonight either, so Happy New Year to everybody. Be careful if the weather comes in bad. Thanks for coming out. Um, and thanks guys for all the work that y'all have done to get us ready.
Tim?
So every year or so, the council talks about various things. We get sworn in. I suspect we're doing that in February or at city council, next council, great. Uh, and we talk about all manner of other things, including the order of business of our meetings. Uh, as I mentioned a month ago, I would like to add opening prayer to our order of business. It's actually codified with us. That ordinance is thirty point zero five. And I provided handouts. Um, there's the order of business, literally with one change after the call to order in city council meetings, adding a prayer. I did not see the order of business for the committee of the whole in our code. So the one behind that is just what that would look like. To change that, it would require an ordinance that looks exactly like the last one we did. We would strike out twenty twenty-three and add the number twenty twenty-five. Uh, the US senate and House of Representatives have a tradition of opening sessions with prayer that dates back to seventeen seventy-four. The Arkansas House and Senate each open their sessions with prayer as well. So do several cities around us, including Springdale, which also has an annual mayor's prayer breakfast. Silem Springs, which has an annual prayer walk, Elm Springs, Silem Springs, Lowell, Cave Springs, just to name a few. Uh, and so I would like to ask that as we look at our order of business, that we simply add prayer here as well.
And I don't have a lot. Thanks to the people that come and, and tell us what our failings are or our successes are. But it looks like it's, it's going to be a challenging year and I just can't wait. But thanks, everybody, and I'll move on to the mayor.
Thank you. Okay, um, at the January twenty-first city council meeting, I will be swearing in the council. On, sorry, the fifteenth through the seventeenth, we will be at the municipal league. So several of us will be out at the municipal league, so we will be here. Let me see, for my council, your statement of financial responsibility, you guys will need to go by and see Ms. Luanne and get it. It has to be turned in. Hopefully you, you guys can get it turned in by the twentieth of this month because it has to be, I know it has to be to the courthouse and filed by the end of the month. So I wanted to remind you guys of that. And some, uh, we're going to have our lunch and learn, hopefully the thirtieth. Just want to, you guys, give you guys a heads up on that. And something extremely important. Chief Jensen is going to be, uh, have a new baby and he's going to be a father again. It's a little girl. And we're going to have a baby wipes and diaper drive. And we've already got the table set up. Anybody that would like to contribute to that, just bring, bring, bring it by, put it on the table. And this should be like really soon, within the next probably week or two. She's ready to deliver, right? He's nodding. So thank you, guys. I appreciate you all and we'll move on.
All right, with that, I look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll say, I'll say aye.
Aye.